Again, please take your seats. We'd like to get started. Good evening and welcome to our second Town Hall meeting. I never get tired of saying, "And I'm Jim Ruane, the proud mayor of the wonderful city of San Bruno." And I am joined this evening by Vice Mayor Rico Medina, Council members Irene O'Connell, Michael Salazar. We'd like to tell you that Vice Mayor Medina and Councilmember Salazar just returned from a memorial service for our eighth victim, James Franco in Pacifica. We have now attended personally all of the services. I would once again like to thank Father Obed and the parishioners of St. Roberts for their generosity in the use of this facility. You should know that in our efforts to keep this meeting San Bruno specific, we did contact the Church of the Highlands, Skyline College, Cappuccino High School, all of which were previously booked. But I think it does say something about the makeup of our community when the largest meeting facilities are at schools and at churches. Along with the presenters this evening, we have with us Assemblyman Jerry Hill. Thank you, Jerry. There is one person who deserves a special thank you for her efforts over the last seven weeks. Our co-host this evening, Congresswoman Jackie Speer, has been with us virtually every day. Jackie has been with us every day, either in San Bruno, San Mateo, or Washington DC, championing San Bruno's needs in what has become a national focus on pipeline safety. We will have a very short update by a few of our attendees, Jackie will introduce them, which I hope will answer a number of your concerns, after which we will answer questions submitted from the floor in writing. We have a number of volunteers circulating throughout the room, so if you have a question and you want to put it down, just raise your hand and we'll see that you get a card. On the city's behalf, I want to briefly update you on two items. The funds we have as a city received on behalf of the Glenview Fire Relief Fund. We have received to date an amount approaching $300,000. I have appointed Councilmembers Irene O'Connell and Michael Salazar to work with a small group of residents to be determined next week on how those funds should be used. The other is a letter which was hand-delivered to me from Chris Johns, the president of PG&E, two days ago. We have been briefed on the difficulties of continuing gas transmissions up in the peninsula and through San Francisco by the PUC and PG&E and various other agencies. While there are still many difficulties in supply ahead, I do want to thank PG&E for one thing, a firm commitment. And I'm going to read to you right from that letter, so there's no speculation about was it delivered and what did it say. One sentence says, "On behalf of PG&E, I want to reiterate to you and the residents of your city that you have our commitment that PG&E will not rebuild the damaged section of Line 132 in its current location." So, there you have it. I now give your, you, our, and your councilwoman, Jackie Speer.
Kind of unaccustomed being on a pulpit. But I'm honored to be with you tonight, and I think that we have crafted this in such a way that you're going to get a lot of answers to questions you have upfront, and then we're going to open it up to any additional questions. Mayor Ruane and the City Council and I have been fielding lots of questions from community residents for the last six weeks, and so we thought upfront, to the extent that we could answer those questions in anticipation of you asking them, it would save us a lot of time, and so we are attempting to do that. So, after I just make a few comments, we're going to have the National Transportation Safety Board come to speak. Steve Gleis is the Director of the Office of Rail. He is going to update you on what has happened with the pipe that has been taken from the Glenview area and shipped to Washington DC where tests have been done on the pipe. We're then going to hear briefly from the Internal Revenue Service, because many of you have questions about the money I got from PG&E, is it taxable? And we're going to attempt to answer that question for you as well. Then we're going to hear briefly from PG&E, and then from the San Mateo County Assessor about how you can get the assessment on your properties reduced. And then finally, from the San Mateo County Environmental Health Department to talk about the air quality, how they've been testing, whether they're going to continue to test as appropriate. Now, after opening statements, if you want to speak specifically to a PG&E Claims Advisor, they are going to be located in the back of the church. Now, with the Claims Advisors...I'm sorry. PG&E is going to be located to my left and your right. The Claims Advisors, can you raise your hands? Are you wearing any special color? No? Okay. And then in the back of the church will be representatives from the Internal Revenue Service. They will be in the room in the back of the church to address any specific questions you have about your circumstances. So, with that, let me just say that this has been a tragedy beyond tragedies for so many of you, and we continue to want to support you in every possible way that we can, and we will continue to hold these Town Halls for you so that you can continue to be informed. And as issues arise, we will attempt to address them as quickly as we possibly can. This is, you know, new frontier for all of us, but we are going to make sure that for you, what takes place is going to be both humane and swift in terms of getting you answers and getting you the remedies that you seek. So, let me first invite up now Steve Gleis, who's the Director of the Office of Rail, Pipeline, and Hazardous Material Safety for the NTSB.
Now I think you can hear me. Okay. Good evening. Again, I'd like to thank Representative Speer and Mayor Ruane for inviting me to here today to provide you with an update on the activities of the Safety Board in connection with our investigation of the accident that took place on September the ninth. As an overview, at 6:11 PM, we had a 30-inch transmission gas pipeline rupture that resulted in a release of approximately 48 million cubic feet of natural gas. The explosion resulted in a significant fire event, creating a crater 72 feet by 26 feet. The section of the pipe that was removed from the main portion of this transmission line was 28 feet by 4 feet approximately, and was thrown about 100 feet from the point of release. The pressure at the time was 386 pounds per square inch. The maximum operating pressure at this particular operation was 375 pounds per square inch, and the maximum allowable pressure at this location was 400 pounds per square inch. Line 132, as this is referred to as according to PG&E, was installed in 1956. Some of the issues that we're looking at in connection with our investigation are involving the material itself of the pipeline, as well as the response to the pipeline incident by various parties. For example, the incident, as we said, took place at 6:11 PM. The upstream valve was closed at 7:20 PM, a little over an hour from the point of the accident, and the downstream valve was closed at 7:40 PM, approximately an hour and 30 minutes after the accident took place. And these are issues that we're looking at. Distribution lines to the community in the surrounding area were shut off at 11:30 PM, approximately, five hours after this incident. Again, this is the, one of the areas that the Safety Board will be examining in our multidisciplinary approach to investigating this accident. To provide you an update as to what we've accomplished at this point, again, seven weeks after the accident, is that we've taken a look at the data from the Operations Center from PG&E to determine gas pressures, the time in which various pressures changed in order to pinpoint both the time of the rupture and the precursor events, the events that led up to this, and those are very, very important in our investigation. So far, we have four pipe segments back at our lab in Washington DC. We've taken steps now to examine all components but the fourth, that just arrived this past week, but we've completed the exterior and non-destructive examination of the three pipe segments that were shipped shortly after the accident, and that involves the removal of the coating, this asphalt coating that you may have heard about. We've conducted radiological tests, which is using x-rays to examine the material structure. We're examining surfaces and photo-documenting the results of the examination for our destructive testing, ultrasonic testing, and magnetic particle testing. And basically, what that does, not to overcomplicate this process, is we're using instrumentation that's known in the metallurgical industry, and we're examining the structure of the metal within the pipe, the edges of the pipe segments, the fractured edges, to determine what they look like as far as their appearance, both at the, you would see it by your naked eye, as well as what you would see under both optical digital microscopes, and we also use a scanning electron microscope to get the very, very detailed information that we need. This is important, and this takes time, because the method of failure and the direction of the cracks is very, very important in determining the probable cause and what potential recommendations that the Safety Board can make. If you can imagine taking a coat hanger, for example, and snipping it with a wire cutter, that's going to have a much different appearance, and therefore a different failure mechanism, than if you were to take that same piece of wire, bending it back and forth until eventually it breaks. And that will help us determine by this microscopic examination whether it was caused by a significant individual event, or a traumatic event, or whether this was as a result of some type of corrosion, or through fatigue that has been building up over a period of time. So, those are the activities that have taken place. Going forward, we're doing destructive testing on these pipe samples. That includes microstructural analysis, again, a much greater level of investigation that we've used at the external, non-destructive level, and that will determine any overloads that took place on the metal surfaces, any fatigue, embrittlement, or stress corrosion fractures that have taken, that are affecting this particular pipe segment. We've taken soil samples to determine if there was any mechanism for corrosion, whether it be microbial corrosion or standard corrosion due to excessive moisture in the soil, and the reliability and the effectiveness of the protective coating on that pipe. But those are the types of activities that we've accomplished so far, and there's still quite a bit of work ahead of us, but please rest assured that the team back in Washington at the Safety Board is working very diligently in trying to examine this material and to work as fast as we can to provide you with an update. We came out with an update about two weeks ago with some very basic information about the accident, and we hope to work forward and produce an updated report before the end of the year as to the result of the testing that we've done, both in the past three weeks and the next few weeks going forward. But we do remain committed to finding out the probable cause of this accident, to come up with recommendations to prevent a recurrence of this accident wherever these types of pipelines are in place. Again, thank you all for the opportunity to give you the update, and I'll be available for questions afterwards. Thank you.
From the Internal Revenue Service, Joe Calderero is here. He's with the IRS, and he's here to help.
It's all non-taxable. I was only kidding, you know. Appreciate the opportunity to address you. Obviously, you've got to be concerned because payments are coming, and obviously, the question of whether or not these payments are taxable or non-taxable is definitely a concern to you, as well as the Internal Revenue Service. IRS has a terrific website. Obviously, it's full of information, but check it out, because it does respond to a lot of your questions. There's publications that I think we have in the back that you may want to pick up on your way out that address similar types of concerns. We started handing out these blue little slips of paper that enable you to contact an IRS employee that is a quote-unquote "expert on disaster losses." This is, you know, rather than going through the IRS regular phone line, the regular number, where you have to go through 17 prompts to get a person, this one here is a direct line. It'll go directly to the person. I suggest if you have specific concerns that you call this individual. His name...nobody laugh here. His last name is Kong, K-O-N-G. His first name is Kin, K-I-N. Phone number, 415...he's out of San Francisco, 415-522-4237. Again, these here little cards are available. Suggest you pick them up. Tonight, if you have general questions, we'll respond to those as soon as this is, as soon as all the speakers are through, and we take a look at your written questions. Those questions that we can't answer, and obviously, there are going to be some, we plan on drafting your questions and sending them off to our attorneys in Washington to respond, to determine whether or not those specific payments are considered taxable or non-taxable. Some of the issues. Cash payments. Reimbursement for living expenses. Incentive payments. Casualty losses. Gain on the involuntary conversion of real and personal property. I was going to mention this last one, but deductibility of mortgage interest, but that shouldn't be an issue anymore because that's been resolved. And with that, I'll finish, and we'll take your specific questions after. Thank you. Yes, we actually covered that. But anyway, there will be people in the back from Internal Revenue Service to give you one-on-one service for those that have specific questions.
Now, we are going to hear from Geisha Williams, Senior Vice President of Energy Delivery from PG&E, and Kirk Johnson, Vice President of Gas Engineering and Operations. They're going to explain what you have seen them doing around the community, among other things that are of relevance. Please come forward.
Let me just start off by really thanking Congresswoman Speer, Mayor Ruane, for having this Town Hall meeting tonight and for giving PG&E an opportunity to participate. I also really want to thank everyone here from the Glenview neighborhood, and more broadly, from San Bruno, for being here tonight. I know that you have many questions, and we're hopeful that we'll be able to answer many of them before the end of the night. Again, before I go any further, I think it's important to, again, just tell you how all of us at PG&E will continue to express our deepest condolences and sympathy for everyone who's been so terribly affected by the tragedy that happened on September 9th. I think that the things that you have gone through are just simply unimaginable, and I also believe that the road to recovery is going to, no doubt, be a very long and very difficult one. But I'm here first and foremost to tell you, to reiterate, to again, give you our commitment that we are absolutely, positively committed to helping the city and the residents of San Bruno recover and rebuild. And we're going to be here for as long as it takes. We know this is going to take a long time, but we are in it with you for the long haul. We're committed to supporting the many residents that were so tragically impacted by this, and specifically, those residents whose homes were damaged or destroyed. We're committed to working with the public officials and community leaders to ensure the safe and reliable delivery of gas for you this winter. And we're committed to listening and to seeking your input as we make some pretty important decisions, and to providing you open and transparent answers, as well as actions to the best of our ability. And as part of that commitment of listening, you heard from Mayor Ruane just a little while ago about the letter he received from Chris Johns about the decision, without reservation, without caveats, the decision we've made not to put back in place the pipeline that ruptured in the same location. Now, I've also been asked to specifically address our efforts to ensure that the residents of San Bruno have access to mental health services, and I'd like to just spend a few minutes talking about that. We have been working with the San Mateo County Office of Health Services, and also with the American Red Cross Bay Area Chapter, to ensure that they have both the resources and the funding that they need to make these important services available to the residents of San Bruno. We also have a process in place to, in essence, put together a referral service for residents that need this type of help with the agencies that can provide it. Of course, these services are just part of a comprehensive set of things and services that we're trying to provide to all of you that need it here in the city of San Bruno. At the same time, we're doing everything we can to ensure that the safety of our gas system is paramount. And this, of course, includes the announcement we made earlier, I guess, earlier this month, announcing Pipeline 2020, which in a sense is a comprehensive approach, a comprehensive program to modernize the gas pipeline system in our service territory. It also includes working with city officials and community leaders on helping us identify an alternative route for this gas pipeline, because I have to tell you that come winter, and winter is just around the corner, we need to be able to make sure that all of our customers are able to heat their homes and prepare their meals with gas system. Now, we've been doing a great amount of work to make sure that for this winter, we're able to provide you with the gas services that you need. And what I want to do now is actually turn it over to my colleague Kirk Johnson, who's going to share with you the specific steps we've taken and the work that still remains to be done for this winter and beyond. So, thank you for being here tonight. I look forward to your questions, and with that, let me turn it over to Kirk Johnson, who's Vice President of Gas Engineering and Operations.
Thank you, Geisha, and good evening, everyone. As Geisha mentioned, we are doing a great deal of work throughout the San Francisco Peninsula to prepare ourselves for this coming winter, to ensure that everybody in the peninsula, all of our customers, have the gas service that they need. Specific to San Bruno, we actually have three construction locations going on as we sit here today. The first location is out on Skyline Boulevard, approximately half a mile south of San Bruno Avenue, and in that location, we are building what we call a cross tie. A cross tie is nothing more than a piece of pipe that connects two pipelines together. And by installing this cross tie, it will give us significantly greater flexibility in our system, in addition, improve the capability of our system from where it stands today. In addition, we've got some activity going on in the Crestwood area, and in that location, we already have a cross tie. That pipeline already exists. However, we are making some modifications to that, to that system, again, to improve our capability and improve our flexibility to deliver gas to that specific area. And the third location is next to Lenardi's, by the parking lot there on Glenview, and that is a location where our distribution system connects to our Line 132, the segment of line that is out of service today, and that Geisha just again committed that we will be not putting back into service. And so, we must move this connection point to another pipeline to ensure that we can deliver gas to that residential area as the winter comes on and as demand increases significantly for natural gas used to heat people's homes. So, those are the three locations of construction that we currently have ongoing right now. In addition, you're going to see a significant more activity from PG&E's Blue Trucks. We are continuing to patrol and inspect our pipelines on a regular basis, and we'll be increasing that as we get forward into the winter season. We want to ensure that nothing is out there that jeopardizes our ability to deliver gas to all of our customers. We are also redoubling our effort around what we call "Call Before You Dig," or Call 811, where we reach out to excavators and contractors and remind them of their responsibility to call 811, so we can mark our facilities to ensure, again, that we don't have any activity that may jeopardize our ability to deliver gas to all the customers of San Bruno. And as we move forward and we get closer to the winter season, you will also hear a lot more about conservation and the need to conserve energy and to conserve natural gas so that we can deliver gas on the coldest of days to all the customers in the San Francisco Peninsula. Now, Geisha also mentioned our Pipeline 2020 program, and so I want to share with you that going forward, specifically in the second and third quarter of next year, in 2011, you are going to, again, see an increase of activity from PG&E. Our effort to modernize our gas transmission system and our effort to add or modify our valves to be either remote-controlled or automatic will be going on. So, you will see estimators and construction supervisors and engineers looking at our facilities to ensure they're in the position we believe they need to be in to do that kind of work going forward. So, for example, if we have a valve that we think needs to be automated or remotely controlled, we'll be looking at the facility, asking, "Does it have telecommunications capability? Is there electric power nearby? Is that valve in a position that it can accept an actuator, which is the piece of equipment that operates the valve, or do we need to move that valve?" So, again, there will be a lot of activity, and you'll see a lot of Blue Trucks, again, next year also. We have heard loud and clear from many of you, and many of you in this room, I suspect, that this construction has really been an issue for the residents of San Bruno, and we thank you for your patience in dealing with PG&E as we have moved forward with all this activity. It is work that we are doing to make sure that we can meet the needs of all of our customers in the San Francisco Peninsula, and it is also work we are doing to ensure the safety and integrity of our pipeline system. Again, thank you for your time tonight, and I look forward to your questions.
As many of you know, I introduced legislation on a federal level to require that all utilities across the country put in automatic or remote shut-off valves in Class III or Class IV areas, so in any highly populated area, which would be Class III, which is where we live, or Class IV, where they have high-rise buildings, which San Francisco would be an example of that. The bill also requires that utilities provide individuals who are within 2,000 feet of a transmission line information regarding the existence of that transmission line in or near their homes. And finally, to provide training to first responders who would be on site, certainly in the case of an explosion. PG&E has agreed to support the legislation, and since then, has also committed to putting in automatic or remote shut-off valves along its system here in San Mateo County, and is now looking at possibly 300 sites in which to do that. Next, we're going to hear from the San Mateo County Assessor, Joel Morris, who's the Deputy County Assessor. I hope you have some good news for us, Joel.
I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to be here, and to thank Congresswoman Spears for organizing this. My name is Joel Morris. I'm the Deputy Assessor for this county, and I'm here to give you some information about property tax relief. Many of you are aware that property tax relief is available to, for those properties that were damaged or destroyed by the fire. For those properties that were completely destroyed, our office has already revised the assessed value for, to reflect the changes effective September 9th. The Tax Collector's Office has already processed these changes, and credits have been applied to the first installment of the tax bills which are due in November. In many cases, the credit has already paid the first installment; in others, it's just a small portion has been taken away. You can verify this by either contacting the Tax Collector's Office or by contacting me. For those of you whose properties were not completely destroyed, or it was minor damage, we need more information from you. You'll need to verify the cost of repairing your properties. Again, the effective date on that would be September 9th, and they will adjust your tax bill for that as well. I think a lot of you have had questions about a reduction in the market value of your properties because of the stigma due to the explosion, and we will be reviewing those, all of the properties in the entire Glenview area, effective January 1st of 2011, for property tax relief for a reduction in the market value. And then, finally, this just happened a few days ago, as the governor has proclaimed this a state of emergency, property owners whose homes have been destroyed... have been destroyed or have been damaged by more than 50% will be able to move their assessed value to a new property if they purchase another property in the county. And there's several guidelines that need to be met. You have to buy a like property. It has to be within 120% of the value of your property prior to the catastrophe. And then, they just move the assessed value to the new value, the new property, excuse me. We have more information on all of this on our website, which is www.sncare.org, S-M, San Mateo, Care Clerk Assessor Recorder Elections. And then, you can give me a call as well, 650-599-1291. I'll be around after the meeting, and I have business cards for anybody who wasn't able to attend as well. Thank you.
Testing, testing.
Okay, our last presenter, and then we're going to be opening it up to questions, is Dean Peterson from the San Mateo County Environmental Health. Dean?
As many of you know, I was working on the removal of the debris on your properties. And on behalf of my entire crew that was working out there, it was a true honor to be part, a very small part, of the community, and to be part of the community as you start to restore. One of the commitments I gave to the community when we came in to do this project was that we were going to leave the properties so that a three-year-old could walk on it. We succeeded on that. All soil samples from the properties are showing that we are well below what we consider to be a background level in soil. Another commitment I gave was that we were going to be working in a manner that was not going to create any additional dust or ash that was going to leave the affected area. And to that end, we were doing a number of different air sampling. We were sampling through the Air Resources Board, monitoring throughout the neighborhood, as far away as the elementary school and as close as to the Bishop's House. And all of those samples showed to be, again, well within limits. We were also sampling right next to the properties that we were working on. So, as we were removing the material and watering it down, those results also showed that we were incredibly clean. An example is, we were working on these properties for a good eight to 10 hours a day for two weeks at a time, sampling continually through that. And through that entire process, we found a total of eight fibers of asbestos. That's all told. Now, you'd consider if you were driving down a dirt road in El Dorado County, you'd expect to find 50 just within a few minutes. So, again, the process that we worked on went very well, and the air showed fine, the soil showed fine. Those results, while they're currently in a raw data form, are being put together in a report. We're hoping to have the final report out within three to four weeks. We'll share that with the City of San Bruno. Hopefully, I can get onto their website, so it'll be available on that. There is currently no ongoing air sampling going on. The reason is, there's really no contamination out there. We took care of any possibility. You've probably noticed up on the site that it looks kind of this pale green out there. Grass will soon be growing. We put erosion control, because the other concern, of course, is with the winter rains. We did not want this material getting onto the streets, into the storm drains, into the creek, and eventually into the bay. Thank you.
There are a few questions for Dean, so since he's here, we'll have you address them right now. We saw a sign on one of the houses that said "Microbial Hazard." There was a horrible smell outside the home. What is this, and what is the hazard? This is from Deborah Marks on Daily Court.
I'm not specifically aware of what that was. I would assume that it's probably mold in the house. Anytime you have a structure, you put a lot of water into it, and it gets closed up, there's going to be mold. If I could have the specific address, I'd be happy to send my staff over to check it out. Also, probably be talking either with the property owner or the insurance company that did the testing, but we would, with the specific address. So, come see me later, or give me a call. On the resource sheet that was handed out tonight by Jackie Spears' office, there is a number for Environmental Health, 372-6200, area code 650, of course. You can call me there, or get me after the thing, after this meeting. I'd be happy to send my staff over to take a look at that.
And James Paraka on Vermont Way. Where and when can we access the air quality and water quality report that was done after the incident?
So, we'll have several reports. We'll have one overriding report that will address the air sampling and the soil sampling that was done in general. That will, again, hopefully be done within three to four weeks. We'll supply that to the City of San Bruno, or you can give me a call at the office, or send me an email into my office, and we'll get you onto the list to receive that information. Each individual property that we worked on will be getting an individual report, and that will detail all of the work that we did on those properties.
Now, this is from Monica Ed on Estates Drive. Was there any more intensive testing on the air quality?
So, real briefly on the air quality, again, we did several layers of air quality. We had staff down doing air qualities, monitoring on the Saturday after the event, because we needed to make sure that it was safe for our crews to start coming in and for the residents to start moving back in. In addition to the air sampling we were doing through the process, at this point, again, there is no additional air monitoring going on.
One last question. I know we had a call into our district office talking about, you know, paint that might have melted, the lead got into the soil, concern they might have for children playing in the soil. Do you have any comment on that?
Absolutely. One of the first things we also did on the Saturday and the Sunday is, we had a crew going through the area, removing any household hazardous waste, basically the paints, the pesticides that you have in your garage right now, to make sure that wasn't going to be a problem. But because there would be a concern for that material going into the soil, once we got done removing the material on each of the properties, we took soil samples on that property, and we did it for a full scan of metals. There were two properties where we found a slightly elevated level of a couple of metals. We went back in, removed more dirt. We re-sampled. Those are all below levels. We found no lead. We found, really, again, we found what we would expect to find, and that was a background level of soil. And as we said, a three-year-old can walk on these properties.
I have some questions specifically for the City of San Bruno. Mr. Lubke, where is the list of drive donors to the recovery effort posted? It will be on the city's website next week, www.sanbruno.california.gov, and available at City Hall. We're working on that right now, so it'll be posted next week. To Clara, Public Works, from Deborah Marks. Three houses on our cul-de-sac have had plumbing backups in the last two weeks. How can we get the water main checked, and what is the effect of the explosion on the water mains?
It is very possible that the explosion caused a certain shock wave and damaged our water main through the Glenview area. It is our intent to further assess this possibility, and next summer, when the road, the street, and the sidewalk will be replaced for the most damaged area, probably our water main will be replaced through that area also. Also, I want you to keep in your mind that the water main is not reconnected through the blast area yet. After all, we'll be open the possibility to reconnect the main. The water service will improve for your area. But our department monitors the situation, and hopefully will manage for you.
All right, these next few questions are for Dennis Hager, Fire Chief. Dennis, Tom Bedea wants to know, what is the plan to clear overgrown brush on city land in the canyon? Try that one, see if it works, but if not, come up here.
Can you hear me? Good, okay, yep. The canyon is definitely one of the department's interface areas that we obviously consider a hazard. For instance, this past spring, we actually had Cal Fire crews come in, recut the fire road that was existing there. And we plan on this spring is to bring in the Cal Fire crews, fire-safe crews, and knock down all the underbrush limb trees as much as we can possibly do.
All right, Dennis, from Mr. Lubke. Is there an after-action report of the emergency response to the fire? How can I get a copy?
There will be an after-action report produced. We currently have our fire incident action report back to the NTSB for their review, and the after-action report will come out probably within 30 to 60 days, and it will be a public document once it's finalized.
And one more. Does the fire department have ramps so cars won't run over the fire hose? Why weren't they used at the Fleetwood and Sequoia Fire Hydrant the night of the disaster?
The fire hydrant doesn't possess ramps. Hose ramps is what we call those, where we can go over the top of the hose. Obviously, we can cross over the hose with the apparatus. It's not the smartest way to do things, but I think the fire crews will adapt and overcome, and that's what they did.
Okay. The next few questions are for our police chief, Neil Telford. From Paul, LooksLikeMalalot. Tour buses are going through our neighborhood and picking up souvenirs. How can we stop this?
There shouldn't be any tour buses going through the barricaded area. The only people that should be going through the barricaded area are those with construction business or investigative business in that area. If you do have something like that or see something like that, please call us immediately, and we will respond.
Okay. From Darlina Sola. When will Clermont-Glenview streets be open again? Thank you.
Now that the debris removal process has concluded, we're going to look at fencing those lots. Once we have those lots fenced off and secured, we will consider opening up Clermont, the side streets, Vermont, Fairmont. Glenview will remain closed, though, from at Glenview and Clermont down through that blast site.
Thank you. And then, for Aaron, Community Development. From Bob Metcalf. What is the city doing at this time to help those who have had their houses knocked down now, clear lots, et cetera?
What we suggest is that you go ahead and give us a call at 650-616-7074, and that's just the Planning and Building Department. And there are several homes out there that were substantially damaged that weren't demolished as part of the original program. So, we'll have to work with those individual homeowners. And then, we've also have a handout and back for the simplified and expedited permit process that we've set up to help those who want to rebuild to rebuild quickly.
Okay, let me see. From Sharon Baum. Will all reports be available for the public? Where is the Crestwood area by Baker Square? I'm not sure who wants to address that. Reports meaning what, Sharon?
So, anything from PG&E, from the NTSB.
Okay. All right. She said anything from PG&E, NTSB, any other investigative agencies, so...
On that one, it's a picture.
I'm sorry, say that again? Where will they be available?
No, I am marked to pay for the people that I would like to respond to. I have to know what their report should be.
Okay, California Public Utilities Commission, National Transportation Safety Board, Pacific Gas and Electric, and San Mateo County Health Department. Yes.
The Safety Board's reports will be made available at the stage that it's about to be released. For example, the preliminary report and the additional factual reports, they will be posted on the NTSB's website, www.ntsb.gov. At that website, you can also sign up for information releases that you would automatically be notified when a press release is issued, for example, in connection with this accident. As the Safety Board collects documents, it's put into a docket. At the appropriate time, the docket is made available to the public so that you will have access to the factual information that is being developed, as well as when the final report is issued, that will also be published on the NTSB's website. And if you sign up for those announcements when it is published and adopted by the board, that'll be made available to the public. But that is the formal, the final document in formal format as far as the probable cause and findings and recommendations.
All right, don't leave. I've got one more for you. But before you do, I'll just say, Sharon, that we will see, as a city, that everything gets designation, we'll have a direct line to those reports for you, so, because we're going to get them too. So, everybody will have access to them. It's all public. To NTSB and CPUC, from John Caberto. Why does there have to be a major disaster in order for aging pipes to be inspected and repaired?
The mission of the Safety Board is to investigate transportation accidents. The Congress empowered the Board to be the lead agency in transportation accidents in aviation, marine, railroad, and in this case, pipeline, along with hazardous materials accidents. We are charged with investigating and developing probable cause and making recommendations to the appropriate bodies as a result of our reports. But Congress did not empower the Safety Board to regulate and to develop standards. In this particular case, the Department of Transportation has that overall responsibility at the federal level, and I can pass the microphone over to Mr. Clark, who can deal with it on the state level. But the Board's mandate, and by legislative, powered by legislation, only allows for investigation. We are not the regulator or oversight body for transportation.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Richard Clark with the California Public Utilities Commission. I'm the Director of Consumer Protection and Safety. The fundamental premise of the question is not accurate. These inspections go on all the time. There are required inspections for distribution systems, their gas distribution systems, there are required inspection schedules for transmission pipelines also. And the inspection that goes on in the high-consequence areas, which are the areas where there are, where people live in high concentrations, those are even higher levels of inspective activity that have to go on. They look for internal corrosion, they look for external corrosion, they look for gas leaks. And so, there is a requirement that inspections go on on a continuing basis, and it's our role at the California Public Utilities Commission to make sure that PG&E and the other utilities that provide gas in this state are adhering to those required inspection cycles, at least meeting the minimum requirements, if not having a higher requirement, and that they're finding what they need to be finding and that they're doing the right things to fix them. So, there is an ongoing inspection activity. It doesn't take a disaster in order for things to be inspected.
Why don't we, please, put those in writing? Otherwise, we're just going to get out of control. Thank you. Thank you. Well, I said it before, and I'll say it again, all right? If you disrupt this meeting, I'll have you escorted out. We've gone through enough stuff. Thank you very much. Thank you. One more for Richard Clark, and Richard, I'm not sure if you can answer this or not. How quickly, this is from Kathy Durenzi. How quickly can we get a couple of residents on the Blue Ribbon Panel? When will they be, when will they meet, and how transparent will it be?
The, I believe that the mayor had a meeting with the Executive Director and the President of the California Public Utilities Commission yesterday to discuss this issue. And I believe that the outcome of that was that this is a Blue Ribbon Commission that's going to have people on it with very high levels of expertise in creating safety and creating safety processes and oversight processes and that sort of thing. So, to have a member from the community itself, unless they had that high level of expertise, I believe this is what you guys discussed, would not be appropriate. But to have input from the community, absolutely, is very much part of our process, and to have it be an open and transparent process, absolutely. We're going to have, the first meeting of the Blue Ribbon Committee is going to be, I believe it's on the 14th or the 15th of November. And at that point in time, the members will come together for the first time, and they will establish rules for how it is that they're going to operate. But we're... No, this is the first meeting of, for the Board to form itself and talk to each other about how it is that they're going to make it open to the public and that sort of thing.
Right. I will follow up with a meeting. We did have City Manager, Conny Jackson, myself, just last Friday. Jackson, myself, just last Friday with Michael Peavy, the, the Director of the California Public Utilities Commission. And he, he did go through the parameters that they're trying to set for this Blue Ribbon Committee. It's not just San Bruno specific. It's a statewide look at everything. And what they do not want to do, of course, is make it, and we don't want to just put somebody on there who's going to be a token, if you will. So what we're trying to do is maybe get a liaison or an ombudsman in place to relay this information to us specifically. But they have their reasons, and it's, it's not set yet. It's not, it's not a done deal. So we're going to get back to them next week and have more discussions. That's really all I can tell you at this point in time. Thank you.
Put it in writing. Put it in writing. That was my question. I was at the PUC meeting, and they're not all experts. Those, that, they'll hire experts. They have an open check.
Mm-hmm. That's right. The, the Blue Ribbon Committee has subpoena powers. It's, it's pretty, a pretty extensive thing. So, I mean, they might be flying to Washington, doing lots of things. So it's more than just, it's more than just a, a patient advocate or a resident advocate, if you will. So there's more to it, and we're finding out more about it. And we, we should find out more about it this week, too. So, two more for Clara with the city. From June, when a natural disaster occurs like an earthquake, water and gas lines break. Given the fact that both of these incidents occurred during a man-made disaster, what consideration is, well, it might be, might not be Clara, California PUC making to acquire portable water systems for Bay Area counties when the next major earthquake occurs? No one will be able to provide mutual aid.
I will just say, from a water system point of view, the city always thinking about it, this unfortunate possibility. And the basic concept is to include in our system as much redundancy as possible, and to make our system able to function, even in the case of a major disaster. To be able to move the water around, if one portion of the system is damaged, how you are able to take that water to provide to another area, and also to upgrade our system to sustain a major earthquake. Enforcing our water tanks and to improve the system to sustain a major earthquake.
All right, two more quick ones. The excessive amounts of water, of previous water make it, makes us possible victims of a sinkhole in the future at Glenview and Estates Drive. Can you comment on that?
I don't think that is possible, only just as a result of the excessive water brought in that area, as a result of the fire. Based on geotechnical expert assessment, Billy had no, caused no major damage to that area, including to the canyon.
Okay, and one more. Regarding clearing trees and bushes in the easement from Catalpa Way to the, to the Rollingwood valve, do you plan to remove the tree stumps to ensure roots are gone?
Typically, the stumps are left, left in, like you see even in the canyon. Those are left in to stabilize the slope, and that's why they are left, the stumps in, to play that role.
There's a series of questions to ask PG&E. PG, PG&E has committed to relocate the pipe in the Glenview neighborhood. What about the remaining portion that goes through our backyards in the Fleetwood, Catalpa, easement? We don't want the same thing happening on the Rollingwood side of Sneath Lane.
Our, our commitment is to replace that pipe from valve location to valve location. We will not be rebuilding through that backyard easement that goes down into Crest, Crestwood. So that section is out.
Michelle on Estates Drive, our neighbors would like PG&E to move the pipeline to a non-residential area. Does PG&E have any answer or update? I think you've actually answered this question. Does PG&E know how long it will take to completely rebuild Glenview neighborhood?
Well, in, in terms of the pipeline itself, it'll actually take physically about six months to construct a new pipeline. Obviously, we haven't chosen a route yet, and when we, when we start that process, there will be time for comment, and there will be a lot of feedback from both the community and everybody involved. And we're still in the very beginning stages of that activity.
What was the date of the last pipeline inspection?
I, I believe the reference is probably to the pipeline that ruptured. The pipeline was inspected. A leak detection inspection was done in the first quarter of 2010, and in the last quarter in 2009, a direct assessment on that pipeline was conducted.
Kurt, my understanding is that inspections are required in Class III transmission lines twice a year. Is that correct, or is it once a year?
The, the, the reference is to leak, leak surveys, and those are completed twice a year in Class III locations, which is the reference and the area that we're dealing with here in San Bruno.
Would we, San Bruno residents, be informed of where the new high-pressure pipeline will be located once that is determined?
The, the, as I mentioned earlier, the route has, the route of the new pipeline segment is, is a long ways from being determined. We are just in the very infancy of trying to determine that process, but everybody will know what those locations and what those proposals and alternatives are.
How do you know the pipe we are now using isn't going to explode during the winter if the pressure is going to be increased?
Well, I, I, I would assume that the, the reference to that question is to the line 132, the section of line that did rupture. And at this point in time, there is no proposed increase in pressure to that pipeline for this winter.
You know, Richard, maybe you could come up and, and speak to the action taken by the CPUC this week at the request of PG&E for increasing the pressure from 300 to 330, if appropriate.
The, the action that was taken yesterday at the Commission was to authorize the President of the Commission in an emergency situation. If he feels, given lots of information from lots of experts, that it is safe to increase the pressure, that the President can do that, the, the authority was delegated to him by the other members of the Commission for him to be able to make that decision. Again, this would only be in an emergency situation. And first of all, second of all, it's, it's not going to be, we don't anticipate that it, that there's going to be a need to increase the pressure this winter. If it is increased, we anticipate that it'll only be a marginal amount of increase in the pressure that'll need to take place. But this action that was taken by the PUC was actually taken because we want to be prepared ahead of time that if there is a need to increase the pressure so that, that all your friends and neighbors can have the gas that they need in order to, to heat their homes and to keep the hospitals running and that sort of thing, that we're in a position to do that. But we're going to be, you know, studying this, the, the President made it very clear yesterday that he is not at all anxious to exercise this authority. We directed the, the, the pressure in the pipeline to be lowered by 20% after, after the, the failure of the pipe, because we want to increase the safety of the communities. We're not going to, you know, easily and quickly make a decision to increase the pressure. It's going to be a very considered opinion or decision before it's made.
PG&E specific strategies for dealing with added stress on the pipes?
Well, in, in terms of this winter season, and that's what I referenced in my, in my opening remarks, we're taking action throughout the San Francisco Peninsula to make changes to our system to increase the capability and flow, given the circumstances we're in today. So let me just start with line 132. We've made no request to increase the pressure of that pipeline. And we are continuing to look at all of our pipelines in the peninsula to see if it's appropriate to even think about raising the pressures in those also. And a complete review is ongoing. In terms of the demand itself, we are working with the ISO to look at the demand for electricity. One of the major drivers and needs of, of gas in the San Francisco Peninsula is Petrarino Power Plant located in San Francisco, and we're working with them to determine what type of options we have not to serve them power, not to serve them gas, excuse me, and get the power from some other source. And there's many electric construction projects ongoing also to do that very same activity. So we don't see the drive for electric generation as being a driver to actually have to raise the pressure or to increase flows in the pipeline system.
This is for Loretta Gropp, and I'm almost thinking that maybe one of the PG&E representatives should speak with her family. If PG&E told you they would mail you a check, but it never came, but they wanted you to sign medical treatment paper and insurance paper, I'm not quite sure. So could you raise your hand and...
This is, this is Jess Brown, and Jess will be here after the meeting. And so if you have a question for him concerning that issue, please feel free to bring it up.
By the way, if you have any insurance issues, we have one of the best people in Sacramento, who is here from the Department of Insurance, Tony Signorelli, who is the Consumer Services Division Director. I worked with him for many years in Sacramento. Tony, why don't you stand up so everyone can see you and know that you're here to respond to any insurance issues? Will PG&E be issuing 1099s for any amounts paid to the residents? I think that we should also have Joe speak to this as well. My sense is, you don't want 1099s from PG&E, but...
Papia or Jess can address that question for you, and if you have a specific around that. And I'll ask them both to stand up again, and they will be here again after the meeting to talk about that very specific issue.
Well, Joe, why don't you come forward? I mean, if you receive a 1099, then that's income to you, and then that will be taxable. You want to make sure that the money that you receive from PG&E is supported by receipts for reimbursement for your living expenses during this time of crisis, or it is part of a settlement with PG&E. In both those cases, there is no tax consequent. Is that correct, Joe? This is the problem with the federal government.
For the most part, for the most part. This 1099 issue, I wanted to hear an answer. I'd like to know whether or not PG&E was going to send out 1099s for all payments going to individuals in the area. And obviously, if you get a 1099, you've got to account for it, right? And if you don't account for it, IRS, when they match those 1099s to your return, and it's not there, you're going to turn around, get questioned, and said, where is it? And why haven't you accounted for it? So I'd be deeply interested to find out whether or not PG&E is going to issue 1099s for any of those payments.
But can you just clarify if, if I spoke accurately?
If, if it's considered taxable income, then PG&E should issue you a 1099. If it's for excess living expenses, chances are, and I say chances are because there's a computation you have to go through to determine taxability. If those payments are not taxable because you went through the exercise of, of doing this computation and you determined it to be not, it's going to be not taxable. Excess living expenses, let me, a little history. Previously, prior to 1969, IRS taxed any payments for living expenses. They changed the law and said the only amount that's taxable is the amount in excess, the only amount that you receive in excess of, excess living expenses. Let me, let me see if I can give you an example here. God. And I was trying to make this non-complicated, too.
What's wrong with you?
If your normal living expenses for a week is $500, and, and because you're displaced, it's costing you $750, and PG&E gives you the extra $200, $250, then that amount is non-taxable. The question is whether or not, whether it's the insurance company or PG&E, it wouldn't make any difference. You treat everything and do the computation to determine whether or not it's taxable or non-taxable.
But wait a second, Joe. If they settle with PG&E for the loss of life, of affection, of property, if there's, if it's part of a settlement, it is not a taxable event, correct? And if it's not, and if you're going to tell me it is taxable, I'm introducing a bill next week.
Putting, putting it that, no, seriously, putting it that, that way, it would be non-taxable if it's for the loss of a spouse or loss of a family or something like that, yes. If there's no, if there's no strings attached to it, if you're just getting cash outright, then yes, it's going to be taxable. It's going to be taxable.
Wait a minute. It's not going to be taxable if it was for living expenses.
Okay, all right, stop. Living expenses, you're right. If it's for excess living expenses, non-taxable.
Lawsuit settlements.
Non-taxable for loss settlements, yes. Lawsuit settlements.
If, if, if the insurance company and PG&E are giving you, let's say, $200,000 for your personal property, as long as you reinvest $200,000 in personal property, it's non-taxable. But you've got to reinvest. Otherwise, it will be taxable.
We're going to discuss this some more.
From, let, let me, let's, let's talk about that a little bit. Again, going back to real property. If the insurance company has given you fair market value, and fair market value is this amount, and replacement value is this amount, then again, as long as you reinvest those proceeds, and chances are you're going to reinvest the proceeds because you need a refrigerator, you need televisions, you need beds, you need sofas, you're going to go out and buy these things. And the Internal Revenue Code is structured saying that as long as you reinvest in, in like-kind property, it's not taxable. I, I can't do that.
If you, if you're still not clear, and I could understand why you wouldn't be, fill out another form and we'll go at it one more time. There's a number of these that are relative to, if it's gift money, you, you haven't received gift money from PG&E. You have received money for living expenses. And...
No, it's just that it's not...
Well, to make you whole. Well...
No speech of tax.
Well, actually, I have a copy of the letter that PG&E was sending to you with the checks. And I think we're going to have to go back to Congress and see what we can do to try and, you know, make sure that this is not a taxable event. I, I do think that we've got a problem. Let's see. How do we calculate the tax if PG&E pays? What, what's the reason for the 12-month wait after NBP? Oh, I think this is the National Transportation Safety Board is probably what this question's about. It's not a 10, it's not 12-month wait. It is a process. It's an investigation that is ongoing. And as Steve has said to us today... process. It's an investigation that is ongoing, and as Steve has said to us tonight, the NTSB will inform us on a regular basis as they come up with lab reports and findings. But their final report will take upwards of 12 to 18 months. All right, let's go back to some of these for PG&E. Where can I get a detailed map of the San Bruno gas pipelines? Thank you, Joe. Where can I get a detailed map of the San Bruno gas pipelines? The PG&E map on the web is too small of a scale.
So, we've made bigger, more detailed maps of the whole San Bruno area and where the gas transmission lines lie available to the city. Since that's public record, I believe, that you'll have access. Or, at a minimum, you can probably talk to someone in the city that can provide you some more information. At the same time, if you want more detailed information, we can also, I would suggest that you call our contact center and speak to someone and see if there's something else that we can provide you. In the meantime, you do have what's on the website, which is a start. But we know that you want more information, and we're willing to give it to you.
Is it likely that there will be more power outages this winter due to the reduced output from PG&E?
I think we answered that earlier, and that's part of all the, all the work that we're doing to make sure that, for example, our Petralo, the Petralo Power Plant in San Francisco, which is a really big user of gas, that there are alternate ways of getting the electric generation into the, into the area. So, we've got a number of activities in place, looking at both, how do we make sure we have enough gas, but also then, how are we sure that we have enough electricity and that all of it is available? So, we're not anticipating a problem at this point.
What are the safeguards, if any, that you are proposing in order to prevent a disaster similar to this happening again?
Well, I think that I would start off by, you know, this disaster should never have happened. It's, it's unfathomable on so many different levels. There's a number of inspections, and you've heard from Mr. Clark, and you heard also from Kirk Johnson talking about the inspections we do, the integrity assessments that we do, and so forth and so on. You know, when something like this happens, it makes you take a step back and say, "Well, what else?" Because clearly, wasn't enough. And that's why we introduce our Pipeline 2020 Program. Five-point plan that looks at, we believe, at the end of the day, there's a certain amount, a pretty significant amount of pipeline that needs to be replaced. We believe that automatic shut-off valves play an incredibly important role in being able to improve the safety of our gas transmission system. We believe that the technology, while it may not be there yet, to provide us better diagnostic and better inspection of our pipeline is yet to be developed, and we contributed $10 million to start a nonprofit for research and development to specifically look for, there's got to be a better way of inspecting this pipeline, particularly when it's not pigable. And we also think that there's work that needs to be done internally, looking at our own processes, looking at best practices across the country, and continuing to work with, with the communities we serve, with the external folks that we serve. So, we've, we've launched this Pipeline 2020 Program that, by the way, is a step above, maybe multiple steps above, what anyone in the country is doing, and we're committed to doing whatever it takes to, to not have anything like this happen again.
Now, many of you had specific questions for the IRS. They have representatives that are in the confessional room. It almost looks good, isn't it? It used to be called the crying room, but we thought it would be more appropriate to call it the confessional room, in the back of the church. So, if you have specific questions, there's five people, six people here to respond to those questions. If you have a question, could you write it down? Okay? It's not income?
Yeah, I know, I know. I'd say, I'd say yes. I mean, this, this here deals with real property, casualty loss, you have fair market value before, fair market value after, extended repairs, and you, you spend that money for the repairs. You're right, it would not be taxable. And I would, I would, I would treat it, I would treat it like...
Joe, what happens, I mean, they've been traumatized, seriously. Everyone's been traumatized. PG&E gives me $15,000 because I've been traumatized to go take a vacation, to get, to deal with the angst. What's wrong with that?
This, this is where the hard part comes in, you know? I don't write the laws. All I'm doing, all I'm doing is interpreting them. There's a code section that says, "Income from whatever source derived is taxable." And then you've got to hunt through the big volume, the Internal Revenue Code, to find where you can exclude it. So, in a situation where if you've got $15,000, and you can say, you can try and say "gift," but we all know it's not a gift, okay, it's going to be taxable. If it's not for excess living costs, if it's not for anything specific with respect to loss of personal property or real property, I can't think of anything in that code that would exclude that payment from taxability. Now, now, someone just mentioned, "What, what happens if we don't get a 1099?" Well, good question. Obviously, if IRS doesn't know about it, of course, we expect, we expect taxpayers should be compliant, but obviously, if we don't know about, if we don't know about the payment, yes. But, but again, but again, hang on, it would be taxable. It would be taxable.
Let me, let me suggest this. I'm going to have the Director of the Internal Revenue Service in my office when we return after the election. No, I, I mean, really, there needs to be a clear provision in the law for circumstances like this, and this is not the only one in the country. It's happening with the BP spill in the Gulf area, and people have been injured emotionally, physically, and these payments are just to help them, as someone said, put their lives back together and to make them whole. And the federal government shouldn't be taxing it. That's pure and simple. So, I don't think, Joe should be hammered on this. I need to hammer the...
I think, I think what we can do, I think what we can do is send these questions back to our chief counsel to get specific responses, and, and they'll turn around and give us specific responses with, with respect to each payment you receive as to its taxability.
All right. Thank you, Joe. This is a... Are you, are you clear now? All right. You know, when you're dealing with tragedy, it's really good to laugh. I want you to know that. It helps. Okay. "Two PG&E employees on duty the night of the explosion refused to testify." Can you comment on that?
I recognize there was a newspaper article that stated that. That is not correct. It is not true. Those employees work for me, and they are available to the NTSB if they wish to interview them.
How can you explain the 33-minute delay to dispatch a crew after the explosion and the one and a half hours to shut off the valve?
The, obviously, the responses we've heard earlier is under the NTSB investigation. I can simply say that the PG&E employees who responded and turned those valves off did so without any notification from PG&E. They came in on their own immediately after the event. They live locally, and they went about their business as fast as they possibly could to safely secure the area and to safely shut off the gas to that area.
If inspections are made, are they, are the inspections made publicly? If not, why? And where? How about pictures of what's being inspected and reported? This is both to PG&E and to the NTSB.
I believe the references to the NTSB investigation, do you want to address that?
Any of the documents that are collected that are going to be part of our factual report will be included in the public docket that I referred to earlier, along with the actual reports that will be available, produced through the course of the investigation and the final report. Some of them may involve pictures, some of them may involve records, but it's, the relevant information, as we conduct our investigation, will be placed in the, in the public docket for everyone to see. So, and I'm not sure how PG&E handles their inspection data as far as making that available, but I'll let PG&E respond to that.
If the, if the question is specific to inspections or leak patrols that we do, we don't, we don't take pictures of that activity. If the question is much more detailed than that, or there's a specific around it, please see me after the meeting. We can talk through what PG&E does in terms of inspections, what we have, what's publicly available already on some of the websites, et cetera.
Who will reimburse the physical loss of value of the homes still standing?
So, PG&E announced a value assurance program earlier this month, and in essence, how that works is, if a resident in the Glenview neighborhood decides to sell their home, and let's say that that, the value of that home is different today than it was, say, September 8th, and let's say that that resident is able to sell their home for a certain price, whatever that price is, and that price is less than the market value on September 8th, PG&E will make up that difference. It's part of our value assurance program.
Line 132 will not be reconnected, but is it going to be removed?
Well, as, as we talked about earlier, we're not going to be reconnecting that line, but we're also not going to be, in essence, putting any gas between valve to valve. So, it's done. It's gone. It's not coming back.
They want to know if they're going to remove it.
You know, I don't know. I think, can you talk about that?
Yeah. Typically, if a pipeline is in service, it's inerted, it's filled with inert gas, and it's plugged, so that there's no risk to that pipeline at all. Typically, unless we're requested by a specific city or an agency, we will not remove that pipe, or it creates all sorts of damage to the roadway and other facilities as you go through that process. It's simply left in place in an inert state, and it's just, it's just there until there's a need to actually take it out of service.
For those houses still standing who choose not to move back, this is for the assessor, actually, why can't we take our tax, I guess, they want, they want to be able to take their assessed value to the next home that they may purchase?
Was the, was the property completely damaged, or it's...
No, they choose, they've chosen not to move back. Depends if they're 55 or not, correct?
Actually, if it's over, if the house is damaged 50% or greater, there's a provision in the code because it's a...
You know what? They can't hear you. Can you take the microphone? Just take it out of the socket there, and yeah.
If the house is damaged 50% or greater, you can move it to another, you can move your assessed value to another property in, in the county.
Regardless of your age?
Exactly. But it has to be 50% or greater, the damage to it.
And if you're over 55, what is the rule now about taking your assessed value with you?
It's pretty much the same. If you're, if you're moving to, if you're over 55, and you're, you're purchasing another property in the same county, or in a reciprocal county, in other words, a county that would accept the value, it has to be, it's 5% per year, and you have to purchase within two years. In this case, it's 120% of the value prior to the catastrophe. So, the value as of September 8th, then it would be 120% of that, and then you, you, it would just be transferred to your new property. You can hold on to the old property, but then, in that case, when you rebuild your house, you would be taxed on that if you've already moved your value.
So, if you decide not to move back to your home, and you buy another home, you can buy a home up to 120% of its pre-explosion value and still retain that tax rate. But if it's more than 120%, is, is it just the difference between 120 and 175 that you pay a new tax on, or is it on the whole value?
If it's greater than 120%, it would be, it would be then reappraised at the, at the new value.
So, you, you won't have the benefit of taking that?
You would not receive the benefit in that case.
This was answered earlier. Why was the gas not turned off for so long after the explosion? What does PG&E doing to improve its response to accidents? Here's, I mean, go ahead, if you want to respond to it again.
Well, again, we referenced that our employees came out on their own, they're local folks, and they came out and dealt with the accident as soon as they possibly could. In terms of what are we doing going forward, we actually are reaching out and working with all of our first responders throughout our service territory, and including this area, and asking ourselves, what should we be doing, and what can we be doing together to make sure our response is faster in any event going forward? And, and so, from that, we'll drive what kind of changes we should make with our emergency response activities. Yeah, and working with the local responders and the local first responders here in your community.
Can PG&E or the federal government assist people with refinancing mortgages due to the reduced values? We will all live, we could all use the opportunity to refinance. I'm telling you, your writing is hard for me to read. Is the individual here, is this Eric? Well, here, having had some experience with this issue, property values have been reduced almost everywhere. And I have two staff members that work almost exclusively with constituents attempting to get their loans modified, who were not in the San Bruno Glenview neighborhood. So, that's happening everywhere. You're asking that because of reduced values that you think are going to be greater than they would have been had there not been an explosion, will the banks negotiate a reduced payment for you relative to your mortgages, or a modification or refinance? And I don't know the answer to that question, but you can submit your request to me in my office, and we'll attempt to contact the, the bank and find out. And then, I had one last question. It was actually for me. Since the area has not, is not going to receive FEMA relief, will we have any type of special interest loans available for home improvements or for rebuilding? Now, the Small Business Administration was supposed to be here. Are they here? Can you answer that question?
My name is Ben Roger, and I'm with the U.S. Small Business Administration. As of yesterday evening, the Governor Schwarzenegger requested that the SBA Administrator declare this a disaster area as a result of the explosion. That was after the denial was received from, for a presidential disaster declaration. At the request of the governor, the SBA can, under its own authority, offer low-interest disaster loans to victims of natural and man-made disasters. We are currently looking at that information, and we're looking at making a decision on that early next week, and we'll make that, we'll expedite that as quickly as possible. So, as soon as we, as soon as we have that information, we'll make it available, and it will be, will be available shortly.
Okay, we, we have a last little stack of questions, which will take us probably to the end. I'd like to ask our city manager to come up for a few questions, and before she does, I'll ask this one. "What is the best way to let the people still hospitalized know their friends and neighbors are here for them?" You probably just did it because the press is here, and I'm sure they'll, they'll let them know. But, that's, that's a great question. My understanding is, and with HIPAA laws as they are, it's difficult to get direct information, but I believe all four of them are still in St. Francis Hospital in San Francisco, and I'm in the burn unit, and I'm sure if you, you wanted to send them a card, it would go directly, directly to them. I hear, for the most part, they're I hear, for the most part, they're all doing better and, and starting a good recovery, although for one or two, it's going to take a very, very, very long time. So I'm sure they would love to hear from you, you know, with some, with some cards, that would be a great thing. To our city manager, let me see, can we get our own website with links to reports and resources, either through the city or using money from the fund?
As many of you probably know, the city's website has a dedicated page for the Glenview Fire information. We are posting information and reports as they become available, and I'm, I'm told that we have the ability and, and can also establish links from that page. It's, we, we think that is a, a up-to-date and will continue, an up-to-date resource, and will continue to maintain it as such. If there is some other method by which that could be done more effectively, we're certainly interested to, to talk to whoever might have a suggestion about that.
Okay, and what are any of you doing to declare this a disaster?
The City of San Bruno, under my authority, is declared an emergency the night of the incident on September 9th, approximately two hours after the explosion itself. That declaration of emergency at the local level, City of San Bruno, remains in effect currently and for the immediately foreseeable future. The purpose of that declaration and it, the extent of its effectiveness is to allow the suspension of competitive bidding, which is a, a state law requirement affecting municipal construction projects. What that means in very simple terms is that, as an example, last Tuesday night, the city council met, and my staff recommended to them that we needed to take immediate action to secure the stability of the canyon walls at the mouth of the Crestmore Canyon, just adjacent to the blast site. That is an approximate $800,000 work effort. It's, that canyon is, as, as you've seen, if you've been out there, now that it doesn't have any vegetation in it, it's a very, very steep walls, and we were very concerned about the integrity of the canyon and the effect that any damage to the canyon or slippage of the canyon might have on the immediately adjacent properties. So we were able to take that action without competitive bidding requirements that would have extended the timeframe for the award of a construction contract for two to three to four months. So that declaration of emergency remains in effect and will remain in effect until the time where we can comfortably lift it with knowledge that the immediate needs of response to this emergency have become resolved.
All right, and one more for Connie and probably PG&E together, because you were involved with me in a meeting with PG&E. PG&E has offered $50,000 to homeowners if they sell their homes within a specific amount of time. Why is PG&E so quick to want us to sell our homes?
We've heard that feedback loud and clear from all of you, many of you, and we've rescinded that timeframe, so take the time you need.
I, I would just say that, that action by PG&E, I think, occurred at least in part, based on advocacy by the City of San Bruno, myself and the mayor in particular. We recognize that there may be some of you that are ready to go right now. We have developed an expedited streamlined permitting process for the development review and construction permitting and inspection process. We've announced that previously. We've waived fees for those normal, the normal fees that would apply to billing permits and planning reviews. At the same time, we recognize that there may be, and I'm certain there are, many of you who are not ready yet, and may not be ready for some period of time. It's the priority of the City of San Bruno in, in meeting your interests to make sure that you are able to move at the pace that you choose. We remain committed to that, and we'll be seeing to it that the city processes accommodate that, and anything that we can do in our relationship with PG&E will be directed to that effort.
Thank you, and maybe the combination question here for Assemblyman Hill and also CPUC. Jerry, maybe you can tell about what's happening at the state level. Why is the CPUC gambling with authorizing a potential pipeline pressure increase on line 132 when root cause of the explosion is not clearly understood?
I think that's a valid question, and certainly of concern to all of us. The increase in gas pressure at a time when we haven't, and the NTSB has not determined the cause of the explosion, is troubling. It's troubling because, as was indicated, that pipe had been inspected twice in the previous year before the explosion. So it is troubling, and it is of concern, I think, and I feel more comfortable after sitting through the PUC, CPUC meeting yesterday, that the president of the PUC will, under extraordinary circumstances only, with expert advice and information and guidance, make the determination with consultation of an independent, the independent review committee. Those are the things that I feel are important before there's any increase, and I would hope and will watch that it is a very marginal, slight increase to meet the demand that's necessary to get PG&E over that hurdle of that cold night that we're talking about. That's what I think is important, and it deserves and will continue to have monitoring and oversight by all of us, so.
Mr. Clark?
I don't think I could possibly say it any better than what you just said at Assemblymember Hill. Believe me, we're not gambling. I don't gamble. I don't go to Vegas, I don't go to any of those sorts of places. We don't gamble with people's safety. And this, it, it will be, again, after, it'll be extraordinary circumstance, it'll be an incremental increase, if there's any increase at all. Again, we don't see the need that, looking out into the future, we don't believe that there's going to be the need to do that. We will know next Thursday whether or not the, the cable that crosses the bay to bring electricity into San Francisco, into the San Francisco Peninsula from Contra Costa County, whether that has, has passed its 30-day test or not. We're not looking forward to increasing the, the pressure on line 132, and it, it certainly will not be with any sort of a gamble in mind.
Just explain, what the power line he's referring to is to, is coming from Contra Costa County under the bay to the Petrero Hill Power Plant that uses natural gas to generate electricity for San Francisco and parts, I believe, of the peninsula. And so that line, if it's working in satisfactory, satisfactorily, then PG&E will not have to use natural gas to generate that electricity, and therefore, that gas could be used to offset any shortage and supply problem that may develop with increased demand on a cold night.
Also, do you know, are you aware of a CPUC Oversight Committee hearing coming up shortly in and around this area, Jerry? Utility?
CPUC Oversight Hearing, oh, yes.
Assembly Utilities-
The Assembly, the Assembly Utilities Committee will be holding an Oversight Hearing in San Bruno on the, the 7th of, of December. So that will be an opportunity for all of us to bring up, discuss issues that are related certainly to the event of September 9th, but also to look to the future at some changes that may be necessary, or suggestions that may be required to provide a better oversight, and in some cases, greater regulation to make sure that this type of an event doesn't occur again. So that will be on December 7th, and we'll have, I'm sorry? It's at the Senior Center on December 7th in the evening. No, it'll be in the afternoon, I think, we don't, is there a time set? It'd be late afternoon or early evening on that day, so it'll be an opportunity for everyone to be there.
All right, thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
We have a few more questions, and then we can wrap it up. To the Insurance Commissioner, what effective mechanisms are in place to make sure carriers do not do the same old thing and look for excuses to deny claims? The most critical is a task force to expedite complaints, and very important to have inspections by professionals who are not on the carrier regular list, but truly are impartial and independent.
Good evening, I'm Tony Signorelli with the California Insurance Commissioner's Office. I would just encourage you all to, if you have any questions on your insurance policy or your insurance claim you want our assistance, please contact us, we can provide one-on-one service to you. I'll give you my hotline number, I'll be here later on also. Our hotline number is 1-800-927-Help. To specifically answer the question, a task force, you know, in essence, the Insurance Commissioner is tasked and charged with protecting consumers and making sure that the insurance companies fulfill their obligations. So I would say that would be your first stop. Let us look at your case, work with your insurance company to get them to the, fulfill your obligation, their obligation to you, and make sure you get paid completely and quickly and reasonably. In terms of, was it independent, independent contract, independent or inspectors?
Very important to have inspections by professionals-
Right.
... who are not on the carrier regular list, but truly impartial and independent.
In reference to inspectors, contractors, adjusters, the insurance company will have its own inspectors, contractors, and adjusters that will go out and try to quantify and evaluate and assess the damages. You're not obligated to use those contractors or to take the opinions of the assessors or adjusters as the final word. You certainly can go and get your own contractor, which you probably should, and your own assessor, if it's, whether it's an engineer, or a soil expert, or whatever the situation may be that you're trying to work out with the insurance company, you're allowed to get your own inspector to do that. If you go with, in terms of the actual repair that's done, if you go with the contractor referred by the insurance company, the insurance company is required to warrant the work that they do. So that's one thing to keep in mind. However, you need to make sure you're in agreement on the price, so that there's not an issue going forward. If you're not in agreement on the price, your contractor should get involved, you should hire your own contractor, and that contractor should submit an estimate, which will then obligate the insurance company to review your information, your experts' information, and creates an onus on them to have good reasons for reducing your contractor's estimate.
Thank you.
Oh, absolutely, you know, the, the law is clear that you have a right to choose your own contractor. No, in terms, they, they have a right to choose their own people to provide an opinion, but, right, and, but you have a right to, to counter that, let's say, with your expert. And exactly, we could take a look at that and see if what was done by the insurance company was reasonable.
Tony, we had a case that came into my office that makes me think that the way the insurance companies are handling these cases is problematic, because they continue to handle these cases like they would handle any case that came in to their office. But this was, you know, an explosion. So in one case, the insurance company valued the roof on the house as being, you know, already 20 years old, so they were only going to reimburse for the 10 years. And so meanwhile, the homeowner still has to put on a new roof, and they'd like to get a 30-year roof, and yet, they're not going to get that from the insurance company. Then the insurance company is going to go to PG&E to be reimbursed, and then the homeowner's going to have to go to PG&E to try and get the rest of the payment, so they could actually put a new roof on their home. And it seems like there's got to be a better way of handling these cases, since, you know, the insurance companies are going to be reimbursed by PG&E anyway.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good, it's a good point, and we have to distinguish between the withholding of depreciation, a temporary withholding of depreciation on the roof, which once you replace the roof, will be paid to you, and typically, that's paid in a, in a fashion so that it's, you're not out of pocket to the contractor by the time the roof is done, that money can then be paid, once you've signed the contract with the contractor to do that. In that case, it's just an issue of the withholding of that initial money, if it's impeding the ability of the homeowner to get the work done for some reason, then certainly, that needs to be reevaluated, or we need to simultaneously work with PG&E to pick up that difference, if, you know, have them consider that additional withholding, that difference upfront, so that both those funds are available at the same time. So those are some of the things that we're looking at in response to some of these unique issues.
And is PG&E willing to do that?
You know, conceptually, you know, I think PG&E and the insurance companies are all willing to work together to try to resolve these issues. In terms of case by case, we really got to look at that, you know, on a case by case.
Hi, Jess Brown with PG&E Customer Care. We're working very closely with the Commissioner's Office as well as the carriers, to make sure at the end of the day, we're going to make sure we replace that roof and get it in place, and, and kind of take these issues away from the residents, frankly, because you're dealing with enough, and we'll work out how, who's going to get paid, and what's going to get paid, but we're going to make sure that stuff takes place and gets done, if that makes sense.
But you can understand that they don't need any more aggravation, right?
They do not, you do not need more aggravation, absolutely not.
So, can we be certain that if there's a dispute, that they can come to PG&E so that they don't have to deal with the outstanding-
That's correct, that's correct. So if your insurance company for whatever news is not working, obviously, work with Commissioner's Office, but also, we'll make sure we're going to pay that difference, so you can get that roof on plate, so you're not waiting in, in purgatory, trying to find out what's going on with that. And then we'll work it out with the insurance company later on. Yep.
Thank you. All right, we have time for just a few more questions. To Clara, Public Works, will our streets be repaved now that debris removal has ended? Clermont Drive has suffered greatly with many cracks.
Now the winter is coming, it's not a good time to, to have new pavement. It's based on our plan, next summer, after the winter is over, in meantime, the design will be done, and the water system and the street, including sidewalk, will be replaced.
All right, and for our Police Chief, do you have an estimate of when Glenview Drive will reopen?
Glenview Drive by Clermont will, we anticipate will be open fairly soon. From Glenview Drive going southbound towards the blast site area and towards Estates, I don't know, it may be a couple of months at least. We need to conclude the investigation, then Public Works needs to go back, fill that hole, make sure the roadway's safe for you to open up and travel.
All right, a lot of the other questions are very specific questions that have to be addressed to the IRS and the county assessor and the tax collector, so I believe they spoke tonight and gave you direct numbers because they're, they're property-specific, so we don't want to get into too many details. But I would like one last person to come up, and that's Harold Brooks with the Red Cross. Harold, you here? And maybe give us an update of, of where the Red Cross is now, and maybe some of the funds that you've received and what they've been used for.
The Red Cross is really privileged to, to be the vehicle for a lot of the, the really wonderful work that's been done, mostly by our volunteers. We, we have raised a significant amount of money, roughly $800,000, and due to the fact that there's been such a generous outpouring from PG&E and others, we haven't spent as much as we would have ordinarily by this point in time. We spent about $100,000. So the balance of that money will be used for the, what we call the recovery effort. A lot of it will be for mental health assistance, which we imagine is going to, to increase, the need will increase over- the need will increase over the course of the holiday season and things like that. And so we, we've engaged a number of agencies and organizations to help, who have mental health professionals, to help us in that effort. And so if you know of folks who need the help, please don't be shy about sending them to Red Cross or call our, our 800 number, which is 888-4-Help-Bay. We'd be happy to, to link them up with the mental health professionals. The, one of the other things that we hope to do, and I was back in Washington on Tuesday talking to a variety of folks, we'd love to make San Bruno one of the 10 pilot communities that becomes a resilient community and pour a lot of time and effort working with the fire chief and, and others in making sure that if anything happens here, the amazing response, which happened anyway, is notched up to the next level. The folks I talked to in Washington were very, very prone to say yes, because they watched. I mean, this, this whole tragedy was played out on CNN and they said, the people of San Bruno are amazingly resilient already. If we can put some tools and some training in place, we can't imagine how wonderful a model it will be for the rest of the nation and really the world. So those are a couple of the things we're doing. We'll, we'll be completely transparent with those dollars and make sure you know every expenditure that we make with them and we'll continue to report. We're not going to rush, because again, we had the unusual outpouring and generosity from PG&E to provide the food, clothing, shelter. We had the grocery stores around here provide you with a variety of vouchers. We had Gap who provided you with $250 cards to go and do some shopping. So it's just been wonderful, the kinds of things that have happened, and we're going to continue to coordinate and work with a variety of agencies to make sure that this recovery is done well. So I, I hope that answers the question.
Thank you, Harold, very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want Mayor Ruan and the city council to stand up and I want the city manager, Connie Jackson, stand up, and I want all of us to applaud them for an extraordinary job that they have done. Let's hear it for the staff as well. All right, I think that concludes our town hall for this evening. We appreciate that you want to be continued, you want to continue to be informed about what's going on. So we will schedule another one in four weeks, probably, so that, again, you continue to have your questions answered and maybe I'll have an answer for you from the IRS by then too, who knows? Good night and, and have a. You, you should all know that PG&E and the IRS are still here, you can have your one-on-one meetings with them now in either of those two rooms.